I'd like to call the meeting to order at seven, oh, seven oh one. It changed right as I was about to say it. We have one absent commissioner this evening, Commissioner Hudson. And first of all, we have citizen communication. The Planning and Zoning Commission welcomes comment on items relevant to the Planning and Zoning Commission not already scheduled on tonight's agenda. In accordance with the Texas Attorney General's opinion, any public comment that is made on an item that is not on the published agenda will only be heard by the commission. No formal action, discussion, deliberation, or comment will be made by the commission. Each person providing public comment will be limited to three minutes and will be asked to state his or her name and address for the public record. Is there anyone present wishing to address the commission this evening? All right, seeing none, we will move on to item three, which is the consent agenda. All matters listed under the consent agenda are considered routine by the commission and will be enacted by one motion. The items include preliminary and final plats where staff has found compliance with all minimum subdivision regulations. All items approved by consent are approved with any and all staff recommendations. There will not be separate discussion of these items. If any commissioner desires to discuss an item on the consent agenda, it will be moved to the regular agenda for further consideration. Are there any items the commission wishes to remove from the consent agenda? The chair actually would like to move three D, the master fee schedule update. Otherwise, I will accept a motion to approve items three, A, B, and C.
It's a moot.
Second.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, motion passes, thank you very much. Next up, public hearing. The commission welcomes comment on the following items. Each person providing public comment will be limited to three minutes and will be asked to state his or her name and address for the public record. Jeremy, it looks like you're up for four A, which is on our, a land usage update.
Good evening, Chair and Commission. So if you'll recall, about a year ago, we started this process of having conversations about mobility master plan. And so tonight, we're bringing forward all of the hard work that's happened over this course of year, bringing that to you. Tonight, we have Kim Lee Horn, Kelly Reese with Kim Lee Horn is here to go through that plan. But just as a quick reminder, the mobility plan is a combination of our transportation master plan and our trails master plan. We've combined those together to be able to establish this, to talk about transportation in, as a whole, going through the community. So I'll bring Kelly up, she'll be able to go through the plan with you, give you a presentation, and then any questions that you have, we'd be happy to answer those. So that, and turn it over to Kelly.
Good evening, my name is Kelly Reese with Kim Lee Horn. As Jeremy said, we have been helping the city put together the mobility master plan, which we have brought tonight for y'all to see. It is in very near final but draft form as we take it to y'all into council to get it finalized. I'm gonna go over what is this. Tonight, we're talking about what is the M and P, talking about the draft that y'all have in front of you right now, going through some of the key elements of it, the public input we got, the updated roadway plan, updated trails plan, and cross-sections, and then talking about what's next from here. Starting with an overview of the plan, as Jeremy referenced, we started with multiple different transportation plans. Y'all have seen this before as well. Started with the transportation master plan, which was done in 2020. This really looked at roadways at the time was its main focus. It was really trying to get toward a roadway CIP, and so it focused mainly on the actual car infrastructure thoroughfares. In 22, Flugerville publishes comprehensive plan that talked a lot about walk, or communities, ten-minute neighborhoods, how do we integrate transportation themes into that as a visioning activity? And then in 2023, the parks, rec, and open space master plan was published that really integrates some of the trails plans. And so this mobility master plan is looking to integrate those three items together, the roadway plan, the trails plan, and then the vision of the ten-minute neighborhood and integrated communities. The vision developed for this plan was that the mobility master plan strives to create a sustainable network for multiple transportation options that enhance safety, connectivity, and resiliency for the Flugerville community and visitors. This gets covered in a minute, but we had an advisory committee for this project made up of Flugerville residents, and it was with their input that we came up with this vision, as well as the goals for the overall plan that were summarized as safety, a well-connected system, an effective system, a system that offered travel options, used regional partnership, and had a good communication structure to the public. And then these goals, you'll see in the document align really well with strategic plan goals that the city currently has adopted of safety, economic development, infrastructure, and services. All of those goals tie back to one of the M and P goals in some form or fashion. So in front of you, you have the draft M and P. We're here tonight for your comments, and so if you have any sorts of thoughts on them, please let us know. It's organized into eight chapters, an introduction, talking about the engagement that we did, going over the roadway thoroughfare plan, the active mobility plan, and trails, touching on ten-minute neighborhoods from Aspire, talking about funding, the policy framework, and then final thoughts for the plan. Going through some of the key parts, public engagement. We had multiple recurring groups. City staff had several departments helping us out, planning parks and rec operations, and development engineering, as well as the advisory committee that I referenced with eleven residents from Flugerville chosen by council to represent the interests. I think most of these came from the Flugerville 101 course. As well as, there's an online website. We went several times to the public trying to meet people where they're at. We went to Deutschenfest, we went to several of the music in the park nights, we went to events in Flugerville to try and catch people and bring them to this website. There was a map that had over 700 comments on it where people can comment on things that they like, things that they don't like, that we use to kind of develop this plan, as well as surveys about how people use the system that we use to develop the plan as well. A lot of the key takeaways from that was over 50% of the feedback we got was about roadway improvements, intersection issues, and pedestrian safety. We also talked with a lot of the agencies in the area, Travis County, we talked a lot about right-of-way coordination within the ETJ, Texat, we talked a lot about classifications. We changed some of the way cross-sections function in the plan, and so we talked with them about how that would work with them. And then based on the survey, we saw people were most, are concerned with intersections, and were really happy with the trail system and wanted it expanded. Going to the roadway plan, sort of to give an overview, first, you have an arterial collector and local system where arterials are your biggest roads, going down to local are your smallest roads. Arterials are typically higher speed, fewer driveways, while local, locals more driveways, lower speed. You can see a map here kind of showing the area where we're at with Flugerville Parkway and 685. This red network is the arterial network, kind of the backbone of everything, while your collectors are the smaller roads that connect the arterials, and then your locals are everything else that connect to the collectors. So looking at that, the draft plan from the mobility master plan can be seen on the screen. It's a lot denser than the current plan, especially in the ETJ. And the other big difference from the ETJ is that all the collectors out there are major collectors, which means they have the three-lane cross-section compared to the TMP as it's adopted today, before we adopt this document, has them all as minor collectors and two-lane cross-sections. There's a couple spots where roads have been realigned, you can see with the black jag marks, which are mostly due to existing curves that we're trying to smooth out. There's also some consideration for floodplains and trying to move roads out of existing floodplain areas. And you can see some thumbs up from areas that we got specific engagement from the public on roadways that people were interested in seeing. Going over what changed, like I said, there's a fuller grid on the east side in the ETJ to kind of promote that goal of increased connectivity. We separated bicycling pedestrian facilities, which you can see a little better on the cross-sections that are coming up, so that they're all off the road and behind the curb. This is both a safety improvement and a maintenance cost improvement, because the cost of thermoplastic paint has really been going up, and so having, eliminating the paint by putting them behind the curb is a cost saving. There's about 200 new travel lane miles in this plan compared to the old plan, a lot of that being new major collectors on the east side, and so there's a lot of those lane miles just come from increasing those to major collectors. One, another big piece is that in the old plan, there were two types of arterials, a four-lane and a six-lane. Part of what we're doing in this plan is by increasing the connectivity and the density of the network, we're eliminating the six-lane facilities from the plan, except for a couple key spots that I can show here. You can see the pink along 685, Pecan Street, and Flugerville Parkway. Because all of those are in such close coordination with another jurisdiction, Texat and Travis County, and because 685 has its own study going on right now, all of those are being called special corridor areas that we're going to continue to work out as we work with those jurisdictions and as the study progresses. We identified a couple of critical connections, a couple, I don't know if I have a mouse I can point at, you can see them in purple, they're all very short stubs, and these are areas where existing road stub outs exist, and if we just build a little low-hanging fruit, couple hundred feet of pavement, we can make more connections. And there is more right-of-way required in the ETJ, again, because of that major collector increase, and because the cross-section of the major collector has gone from 70 feet to 80 feet of right-of-way, which I can cover more in the cross-sections. Talking about what changed, really, the key theme that we called for the whole project was creating options for your options. We want options for routes. You can see an example of two neighborhoods, one of them is up off of Kelly Lane. It's over 100 houses that only have one connection out to an exterior network, and if anything happens, if there's backups, if there's construction, you're pinched at that one point. Compared to downtown, there's all sorts of options, and so if there's construction or an accident at one of the locations, there's all sorts of routes that you can get out. And so the vision that we're going toward is more of the grid system where you just have more options of how to get from point A to point B. Also, mode options, wanting people to have any sort of mode that they want to get around, whether it's their feet, whether it's their car, or anything in between, trying to give more access and infrastructure to allow those types of movement. Also, view options, that you can see downtown Pecan Street on the top image compared to Desa on the south in a more kind of commercial area, and so just really giving a variety of options to Flugerville. Next up is the trails plan. Similar to the arterial collector, local classifications for roadways, we have spine, loop, and arm for the trail system. You can sort of see here, spine serves the same purpose, it's the big overall backbone, loops connect spines, and arms collect loops essentially. And so here, you can see the trails plan where spines are shown in red, loops are, arms are shown in blue, and loops are shown in purple. The solid lines are existing, the dashed lines are proposed. Many of these are already proposed today, but almost everything in the ETJ is new to this trails plan. A lot of them do follow the line of existing roadways. Think of the charity use path along Flugerville Parkway, the big 10-foot sidewalk. We classified in this plan, as long as the facility is separated from the road by at least some form of buffer, and is at least 10 feet, then it could be classified in the trails plan. And so some of these roadways out in the, or sorry, some of the trails out in the ETJ are assumed to be following a charity use path along a arterial roadway. There's also several that follow creeks. There's a kind of odd-looking electrical easement that has a long east-west kind of straight line, and so trying to find a lot of existing area that we think we can follow to increase the trails plan. It's also a couple of critical connections that were identified from the TMP as places that we really should be looking to connect. You can also see, there's connections to the Hutto, Round Rock, and Austin trail systems. The stars show places that our plan is proposing to tie into those plans, so we make sure it's not just connection within Flugerville, but within the region. And then similarly to the roadway plan, the thumbs up show areas that public engagement specifically called out, looking for certain trails. Going over what changed, because a lot of the trails follow the roadway, and because the roadway grid is denser on the east side, we again have a fuller grid on the east side. We had a lot of considerations for what counts as a trail, does a shared use path count as a trail? And so we did end up classifying them all as trails, but have different considerations for ones inside or outside of right-of-way, which you can see in the plan, mostly to do with future considerations of, do we eventually one day allow electric vehicles on the road, or on the trail system? Do we allow scooters on the system? And so as of today, nothing with that is changing, but we do sort of have the two classifications for if that conversation comes up again in the future. Have tie-ins with neighboring cities, we've updated the inventory of what's existing and proposed, had a lot of talks about who is permitted on the trail system, are vehicles allowed? And some of that is classic, again, as of the final draft, none of that has changed, but some of that conversation has been, set the framework for the future and the in-and-out of right-of-way. Identified again some critical crossings and updated the classifications of some of the trails. Going into the cross-sections, we have five main types of cross-sections. The first one is the local, and changed essentially not at all. You have your pavement section, and then you have the sidewalk. The main difference is the sidewalk now has a buffer behind the back of curb. The minor collector, again, is very similar. The big change that you'll see is that the bike lane has been taken off-street and is now behind curb, which again is a slightly higher upfront construction cost, but a lower maintenance cost over time, and is a safety benefit. Major, or sorry, minor collector is a two-lane section, whereas major collector is a three-lane section. There's also an option where instead of having the center turn lane, you could pave it as a median, depending on the context of the road. Again, the bike lane has been moved off the street and is behind the back of curb. And then the big change between the transportation master plan that's adopted today and will soon be overwritten by this mobility master plan, is that the cross-section has increased by 10 feet of right-of-way to make room for those active mobility options. An urban cross-section, which as of today, there's few in Flugerville, but this is kind of the vision for Colorado Sand as it gets constructed, and Main Street as it gets constructed. This has the option of either a bike lane or parking. You could do one of each, you can do both of biking, you could do both of parking, depends on the roadway and the context of what makes sense there. You'll see the bike has been moved behind the back of curb, and the cross-section is the same regardless of, sorry, the width of the cross-section is the same regardless of which one you use, and so you can mix and match as a context demands. Finally, there's the four-lane arterial. Big change between the transportation master plan and this one is that the four-lane arterial does have 120 foot of right-of-way, whereas previously, there are major and minor arterials, and the minor arterial, the four-lane, had 100 foot of right-of-way. This one gives plenty of space in the median, that can be future-proof for all sorts of things, it could be turn lanes, it can be any sort of other future option. If transit comes in the future, it could play into that. If you have more active mobility options that you want to put in, it can go into that. It really preserves right-of-way, you only want to ask for it once, it's hard to go back and ask for it again, and so it just leaves that option for whatever Flugerville develops in the future with its transportation system. It also has the bike lanes and the shared use path on both sides. As I mentioned earlier, the six-lane arterial option has been eliminated, the right-of-way width is still there with the four-lane, and so that also helps with the ETJ with the special use corridors, where we're trying to figure out, is it four-lane, is it six-lane in coordination with Travis County? It just preserves the same amount of right-of-way. But in terms of what we're proposing specifically within Flugerville, we're no longer proposing six-lane arterials. Going over what changed, we have wider bike lanes. Trees have been set back from the roadway to be, you'll notice, none of them are right up against the road, they're all behind the shared use path and sidewalk. The lanes in the transportation master plan were a little squeezed, especially in the major collector, where we really had to squeeze to get it down to 70 feet. And so some of them were 10 feet, some of them were 12 feet, and we've just standardized all three lanes as 11 feet. That major collector right-of-way did go from 70 to 80 feet. The urban section, the main difference between the TMP and today is that there's no longer the center turn lane, just given the thought that the place that the urban section is going would be more dependent on the active mobility or the parking more than the center turn lane, and that areas that the center turn lane is needed were classified as major arterials instead. All bike facilities were moved behind the curb, and then we're down to the one arterial type, which is the four-lane. In terms of what's next, we're presenting this to you today and are interested in your feedback. We're going to council next Tuesday for the first hearing, and then the second reading is going to be two weeks from then. After that point, we're planning to adopt it, and it will roll into the engineering design manual updates that are happening and get integrated in the new development ordinances as well. And so with that, any questions or comments for now?
Thanks. Let me, is there anyone here from the public wishing to speak in the public hearing? All right, seeing none, I'll take a motion to close the public hearing.
To close the public hearing?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, public hearing is closed. Questions, comments?
I'll start with a quick one. I noticed on a lot of the maps, it cuts off at the edge of Flugerville, which makes sense, of course. But when we're talking about kind of like destinations and different amenities and stuff, I wonder, did you guys take into account maybe amenities in nearby jurisdictions that are close to the border? For example, I live kind of on the northwest side, and like, the closest grocery store for me is probably in Round Rock. So, and that kind of goes both ways, like, I would probably go to that grocery store, but maybe there's some amenities, parks and things like that in Flugerville that, you know, we'd like other communities to be able to have accessible. Is that kind of considered in the plans as well?
It was considered. There's a section of the plan that shows kind of how we developed the active mobility network and looking at tractors within Flugerville, and so we really looked at what's in Flugerville to develop that network, but then almost anywhere that there's a stub, that approached a stub with another jurisdiction, regardless of if there's a tractor there or not, we closed the gap just to promote that connectivity.
There's also focus on, on some of these, like, improvements into, say, up in the northern area, say, around Gotta School Road and 685. So there's been some focus on looking at those roads in particular as well. So in those areas that we know that there's bottlenecks when we're leaving and entering into other jurisdictions, that would be something that would be incorporated.
The trail connection too, you might touch on that, the trail connections to Hutto and Round Rock were also considered with this, where we hadn't done that previously. And I think that's, that's pretty significant in this plan as well.
Yeah, that's great. Thank you.
Yeah, yes, I have a question. And sorry, my mic's not working, so I'm gonna, I'm gonna talk a little bit, but I mean, I'm talking to y'all. So, small thing, on page 11, you see the map, the regional network, but the ETJs aren't included. Is that by design, or do you think there's, is there benefit to including that so that if the public has a question about, you know, well, why aren't we touching different parts? Who's got which ETJ? Is that, is there value to that? Or is it just clutter the map?
Yeah, we could add that.
I think there's value, it's not excluded for any reason, and so.
Well, just illustrative, but, you know, I know, like, I used to live in the, in the green part touching the blue part of the city of Austin. I used to live in like, that neighborhood, and it was weird because, you know, like, I paid Flugerville taxes, but city of Austin water, and, I mean, it was really strange.
Yeah.
And so I think some people might not understand the nature of that, but if it's too complex or clutters the map, then I would mess with that. The thing I did have a question about is on page 16 with the crash heat map. So it shows that at the intersection of Pecan and 685, I think, yeah, Pecan and 685, there's a pretty significant drop-off when the intersection was converted to the continuous flow. Is that something that's, is that particular style of intersection, with the success of that, which is remarkable, is that being considered at other intersections? Or is that a, because of the nature and shape of that intersection, that was the right idea for that one spot, and we're not going to include it elsewhere?
So another part of the plan is that we're, Flugerville's already been doing it, but we're kind of formalizing the adoption of an intersection control evaluation process, which is any major intersection, looking at how to improve it for the future. It's a process where you look at all sorts of intersection types, and this is one of the ones that we would consider. I worked on the 685 corridor study, and I know that along that corridor, we looked at this intersection type as well. It has pros and cons depending on types of traffic, but it's definitely one that the city is looking at, and safety is a big factor in the ICE process as we look at best intersection types.
So on that note, right, I remember when that was going on, and I remember before it existed, that that intersection was like, just hilarious, right? Because it was just, how much of a mess it was. And then now that it's been fixed, now the, now, now it's better, right, as a throughput, and it makes my life a lot easier when I want to go places.
Ditto.
But the public reception has been, you know, pretty vocal, for lack of a better term. Is there an opportunity to, if we, if we select or we choose as a, as a community to start making unique intersections, you know, we should probably lean into that kind of thing and say, hey, yeah, you know, we're a funny town with a funny name and funny intersections, right? But if we're, if we're advancing new ideas and doing those things, like, some of that stuff is, is complicated and challenging to communicate. But I, I think the data proves the point that even though it's kind of silly, and once you figure it out, you'll be all right, but it, it helps. Last thing, and then I'll hand it off to whomever. Page 28 is the comment, public comment category of the map. So lots of public comments, lots of places. If I remember correctly, when we did a similar public comment experience with Parks and Rec a couple of years ago, I think it was, also incredible engagement. So, you know, kudos to everybody in creating a culture of public comment. What, and I was reading here some of the things that stood out, but one of the things that, that is interesting to me here is the, the big idea section. So what were the big ideas that were submitted? You know, was that, was that like somebody saying, I think we should have a flyover here, right? And then, and then you go, okay, that's a big idea, we'll park that? Or was it, you know, a little more specific or more applicable?
Depends on where they were. A lot of the big ideas were roundabouts or other types of innovative intersections.
I didn't, I didn't even, I want you to know, I didn't even fill this out. I didn't, I didn't even, I want you to know, I didn't even fill this out. I promise. And I didn't pay anybody to do it for me either.
I think you knew she was gonna say roundabouts.
I didn't.
There are a couple of hot areas. There's one right at Kelly where you see there's a bunch of big ideas that I don't remember what they were. I do remember they're all different. I was sort of hoping they'd all be the same, given that everyone had them in the same area. But it was everything from flyover type suggestions to roundabouts to just, hey, why don't we put a pedestrian crossing here? There's not a huge theme to the big ideas.
Okay.
Crossings over 130, I think was one of those up by road lane. There, there were significant project sizes.
Yeah.
Okay. And, and so with, with this kind of information, so you have like a really one, and I guess, I didn't see a count that said like a percentage of what the breakout was, but it looks very, very significantly varied. So was, was there anything that came back from this particular part of the study that be, that became obviously actionable? Where you're like, oh, we hadn't thought about that, but it seems like, you know, 50 comments came about one particular intersection or a road connectivity or park connectivity? Like did that, did anything jump out?
Things did jump out. A lot of the requests were for illumination and so now all of our cross sections do have illumination. Some of these as well. A lot of requests for improvements along 685, which fortunately are ongoing. And then several of the spots with high commented intersections ended up being some of the intersection projects that we evaluated toward the end that were scored to be potentially in the CIP.
Okay. So some of the, some of those things already started or like, or?
Some of them have been started and it's good feedback that people are interested in the things that the city's working on. And then some of them were new, came up because of this process and we now have them on lists to keep looking at.
Great. Thank you. Very good work.
I'll jump in. I think, so yeah, very thorough. I was very impressed as I read through the all, whatever it is, 150 pages of, of content here. So really appreciate that. I actually had a couple of notes about the roundabout thing when I was going through it, before you brought it up, I swear. I had it in my notes. I was surprised. I think I saw a list in there of like maybe five intersections or something that were being recommended for roundabout. And that was the only sort of innovative intersection kind that was called out. And I do tend to agree with you that I think that, given our right of way in a lot of these high traffic areas, we're going to have to have creative intersection solutions. And I appreciate that you all have a like framework and model to design that. But I also would have loved to have seen more of a prescriptive or more of a stronger point of view in the master plan of which direction we're going in terms of some of these intersections. And maybe it's not specifically, but maybe it's examples, right? Of, hey, when you have limited right of way or you can't acquire everything you need, or you've got a particular type of traffic problem, what is going to be our sort of, you know, tier one, tier two solution for those types of things? I think that would be really useful and helpful, both from a public communication perspective, but also to paint the vision, right? We've got these great cross sections of our different sizes and types of roads, but we don't have the same thing for intersections. So I think that would be a great improvement. I also, and one specific, we just talked about it, I was going to call out Flugerville Parkway and 685 because we do have that study. One of the things I wanted to bring up as well with the road cross sections, it didn't seem to be unified with the downtown master plan. And so I wonder, were you all intending to include like those road types and forms in, as part of this plan as options that the city will now have? Or maybe I misunderstood a couple of your proposals.
I don't, I don't know the answer on that one. On the cross section?
Yeah.
On for Pecan Street?
Yeah.
Specific?
Yeah.
I thought that we had that tied.
Are they covered or, okay.
Can look into that?
Okay. Yeah, I would just make sure we have those, those covered. Couple of other notes that I had. I really, I love the trail connectivity improvements. I think that's going to be great. I was curious to see more. And again, this is sort of like my preference towards having a point of view in the master plan around, in this case, you had examples of trail amenities, but we did not seemingly propose any ideas for where things might be appropriate or different types of amenities, or what would be the framework for how we would choose an amenity for a particular section of the trails. Love the idea that we're thinking about introducing amenities, but I think going that next step would be incredibly valuable to paint the picture of, you know, what does that future state look like when we do have amenities along the, along the trails? Let me see, I think I had maybe one other. Oh, again, same theme, having a point of view or at least calling out best practices for the lighting. I was going through and was looking at the, at some of those options. And again, I think it's a situation where we could have a, a stronger point of view of, of what we think the lighting standard should be, since that'll kick off other work eventually.
When you say lighting standard, do you mean the like actual type of lighting or like how?
Yeah, the, yeah, the types and then making sure that we're sort of pulling that together across both the vehicle traffic lanes, as well as I saw the recommendations around the trail and shared use paths as well. So just making sure that we have sort of a, a clean way of, of talking about the lighting that we're looking to support.
So I've got some more stuff. Actually, I want to support what you were saying about the idea of kind of unifying the intersection ideas, right? And that there's much more elegant way of, of kind of what I was saying is that, you know, if, if, if we had a whole bunch of the continuous flow intersections, then everybody would be really accustomed to that experience. Same with any other unique intersection type. So, you know, obviously there's not one size fits all for everything. But to, to his point about kind of having a stronger preference for, you know, if we can, if, if three of these five conditions are satisfied, then we're going to pursue our best, you know, case at that kind of thing. So that, I really thank you for summarizing that. The other thing that I was thinking about is signage and wayfinding and placemaking and how all that goes together. So, and I don't know if, if this is the appropriate time or we can talk offline for it, but one of, one time I visited San Diego and San Diego, a particular part like where my friend was living, they, their neighborhoods are very well defined in a, in a very, in a, in kind of the old part of town. And so there are sections of town, you know, maybe a couple square blocks that have a, have a name. And that particular section of town has a big like cool artistic neon sign. And then you have, you know, this, this other part. And so everybody kind of has a placemaking just defined by the geography or, or whatever it was named 100 years ago. I don't even know how that happened. And kind of the same thought process about, you know, how like say Six Flags or Disney World approaches their placemaking and the signage and the, and the directions. I think that really goes a long way to easing traffic for visitors, right? Cause they're, oh, Stone Hill, like if there's a big, there's a list of signs and oh, Stone Hill's that way, you know, and Flugerville Rec Center this way, kind of like they do with some new home construction, right? But, but if you see it in like, I think Fredericksburg has a really strong wayfinding program in their town that lends itself to both the identity of the community, but also actually like directing traffic in a, in a tasteful and kind of minor way. And then lends itself to one of the big sections you have in here, which is placemaking and where people are going and why the connectivity matters. You know, connectivity matters a lot infrastructure wise, but people got to know where they're going and why they want to get there. Thank you.
I'm going to attempt to be brief. Y'all know I'm not good at that. But first of all, very good job and very clear presentation, very well laid out and easy to understand given the volume of information. I love seeing here on page 124, E11, incorporate connectivity requirement into Flugerville's Unified Development Code. Residential street systems must be designed in a manner that discourages through traffic without eliminating connectivity. Cause I know a lot of the comments we get here are around traffic and a lot of the time the comment is coming from people who live in neighborhoods who are like that example with all the cul-de-sacs where there's one, maybe two ways in and out of the neighborhood. And I think a lot of that stress could be avoided if we're making sure that neighborhoods aren't designed that way moving forward. And that's a big part of how I picked my house. I was like, I can get to my house from multiple streets. I can get out of my neighborhood several ways and everything is already developed around me. Two, kind of in adjacent to, but not quite what you guys were talking about with placemaking and then just environmental concerns. I love the idea of the bike being behind a curb and then a sidewalk. And I don't know what those, those little berm like strips of grass are called. I call them hell strips. If they could, any chance you have to make them be not grass and have them be, you know, silver pony foot or Lantana or something else native and drought tolerant. Again, tying back to the Uniform Development Code and the flourishing flora and just, you know, being stewards of our land. Grass is evil here because we don't have enough water to, and also it would probably save maintenance cost along with not having to buy the paint. You're not going to have to water and mow if it's something that is native drought tolerant and low growing. As long as it can also withstand, the, the, the flip side is can it withstand foot traffic? But I'm not, I'm sure you've got horticulturalists who can help with that. And then on the lighting, I know we've talked about it before in residential development stuff that I just wanted to confirm you guys are going to be thoughtful about lighting, that it's, you know, directed down as much as possible and not up light pollution, migratory birds, blah, blah, blah. I would rather not get in a car wreck. And if I have to like make a bird confused in order to be safe, I'll do that. But if we can have both, that'd be great. And then, yeah, and anything we can do to help with public education? Like I know if I had a nickel for every time I told somebody, I know that intersection at Pecan and 685 is really weird, but have you looked at the stats? Man, it's so much safer. They're like, anything we can do to help, anything, let us know. I think that pointing out, we have the data and I know we see the data and I know sometimes it's on public media or public social media. Hey, public media too, like y'all should be calling KUT and being like, why are y'all not paying more attention to Flugerville? We're awesome. Anyway, thank you. So that, not brief.
So real quick, can I respond to a few things just to help with? So a lot of the things that, that I heard were design related. And so I think these are foundations that give us that platform of what do we want to do? And then all of the things that you just talked about are, are critical for us to be able to take into that next step, which is where we would pull into the EDM or into UDC updates. And, and so we'll have those conversations on a lot of those pieces. The lighting are things that we already have in our current design standards. And so then if there, if there's options for making adjustments, such as you see on Colorado Sand, they have a different kind of style. We worked with all in court to make sure that the lighting was sufficient to meet the minimum requirements, but then it provided a different style and things. So I think those are, that's one thing that we can do is that this, this kind of gives us that, the opportunity to then do those next steps because it sounds like you read through the document and you were like, oh, but these things.
No, I read through the document that is, yeah.
Do is, is move into those next stages.
Yeah, this, this part is done. And I'm like, okay, when you go to implement what you've done, please implement it this, with these things in mind. Yeah.
The other thing was, we talked about intersections. And one of the things that we, we did have a lot of conversation, this has taken a year of us going through lots of meetings and having conversations and going down one road and, and one rabbit hole. And then also we're, wait, stop, that may not be it. So then we reprogram and had further conversations on it. One of the things that we tried to do inside of here was to offer opportunities of suggestions on intersections so that there are a couple of intersections that were like, hey, we think that these could work for the roundabouts that, that came off of the maps, comes off, comes off of the survey information. But we also wanted to make sure that was really loud in here that roundabout may not be the option, or a stoplight may not be the option, something else may not be the option. But instead that we're going to use the ICE criteria to go through that process to figure out what really does make sense for that intersection so that we don't tell somebody, you have to put in a stoplight and now it caused all of these accidents because everybody runs it, you know, or chases to, to get through it. Or we don't implement another kind of intersection where we say only roundabouts in our town. But that just doesn't work because you have to have some sort of stop control there. So just to kind of hit on that piece. And I think with the, the question about the street types, I think we can look at that again. We may, maybe what we need to do is call this as the special corridor area and just extend that along Pecan Street so that make sure that we've incorporated all of those types. Because we do have a lot of other plans that are in place. And so that's one of the things that we had to make sure that we were catching. And I think maybe we just extend this pink line further west so that we can ensure that we are catching all of the plans. And I appreciate that.
Okay.
I think, does that, does that help with some of those responses? Did you all have any other comments or thoughts?
I did real quick. On page 100, it talks about federal and state funding. And I was wondering, are these things that are listed funding that like we already have or we hope to have?
The Safe Streets and Roads For All under FHWA grants is something that the city has currently been awarded to develop a safety action plan for the city somewhere in here, if I can find it. It might take a minute, is a list of what we call a high injury network. Travis County actually also had a Safe Streets For All plan. And so Flugerville was part of it and helped develop that high injury network, which is where the roads and intersections where the most crashes are happening today. And the funding is to do, okay, what do we do with this? And then as well, I think there's some state funding for a couple of intersections currently as well.
And just out of curiosity, like with everything kind of going on in the country, are we, is there any worry about maybe this funding not being available in the future?
The SS4A has been back and forth on if we have access to it or not. It changes all the time. My current understanding is that the city does have access to it and will be honored, but it's being figured out.
Yeah. Yeah, that's all. Thank you.
I just had a quick question. First, I want to say thanks to everyone for their really insightful comments. Getting more and more familiar with the different types of documents that our incredible city staff puts together. And there's a lot. And that's a really beautiful vision. And I appreciate hearing everyone's comments. It's, it's a great learning experience. And I apologize if I missed this within the document. One curiosity I have is related to safe routes to get to schools. And, and if there's a certain imagery or, or a certain part that, that could clarify kind of where schools are located and, and is this mobility plan going to increase more access, more ways of getting to schools and, and certain types of like necessity, infrastructure, grocery stores or something that I think about. There's, there's times I wish I could ride my bike to HEB a little bit easier. Just those kind of specific places that people have a tendency of wanting more walking access and, and biking access too. It's just one question that I have.
There is a map on page 72 that calls out a lot of these items and is part of our like framework of how to be developed the trails and active mobility system. I think we've gotten a comment about schools a couple of times. And so we can really highlight a piece about school connectivity.
You said, what page?
Seventy-two.
Okay, I was looking for one seventy-two.
Wow, you guys read my mind. Perfect. Thank you. I appreciate that.
Yeah, I think that that's a great call out. And I think there's probably maybe take another look at the pedestrian crossing recommendations in there and unify that with some of the school work as well. Some of our schools are on roads that are the higher speed than would is probably appropriate. So we may need to like down, reduce that in terms of whether it's the active signals or whatever other tactic may be appropriate. And I had one other comment very much related to that, that I wanted to point out as well, which was neighborhood traffic calming. I think there was two sentences in the entire plan about that. And I think that is, I think that's not enough. I think that there are several opportunities and we've gotten public comment in the past as well about areas that because of our increased connectivity, they see an increase in traffic. And a lot of times that's a great thing. Sometimes it's not. And I think we need criteria on how we look at those situations and what our toolkit of how we can respond, what that might include. I think it's, it's very much a, a safety issue in a lot of, in a, in a lot of ways. So that was one where I would, would love to see some additional work to flesh that out a little bit. Um, so that was one where I would, would love to see some additional work, uh, to flesh that out a little bit.
And I think we, that's one of the implementation pieces, right, is it's
I think you said toolkit explicitly.
Yeah, to create a road management calming program. Yeah. Um, so that it was to, to identify that there's still work that we can do.
Yeah.
I have a question about schools, actually. Glad you brought it up. So do y'all, did y'all ever, did y'all, through this process, did you consider the school district maps for attendance areas? When you were considering some of this, here's, here's why I ask. So, uh, my kiddos go to Merkison Elementary and I am significantly benefited because we live on the south side of Kelly Lane. However, a large portion of Merkison, Kelly Lane Middle and Hendrickson, well Hendrickson High School, it's much different. But, uh, Merkison especially and Kelly, and, and, uh, Kelly Lane Middle, lots of foot traffic and lots of them live on the north side of Kelly Lane. I recognize that Kelly Lane was probably not designed to be four lane or four lane divided at the time, et cetera. Um, and there's probably not a future where the district is going to realign those maps just to, to address safety concerns, right? And, and so then the solution is like, all right, well, if that's not going to happen at the district level, then what do we do? Do we do tunnel underneath like we have over in front of, I think it's Park Crest Middle off a railroad? Um, which I do think is, is great. Or do we do a, a footbridge over the top, which seems like it'd probably be, uh, more challenging? Um, so I think that would be a major consideration. And also I forget the, I forget the school that's, there's one that's over like off of, of Grand Avenue, I think, or something that's over there. Is elementary school. And so I got to imagine just when I've gone flying down Grand Avenue Parkway that that's, um, uh, a very I'm, I, absolutely, and I will follow the law. But even at forty-five miles an hour, that is really quick.
Pretty quick.
You know, and, and I think, I think with that note too, if I remember correctly, Grand Avenue is five or six lanes there. If you include the turn lane and the median. And so if you think about a nine-year-old trying to cross six lanes of traffic in a stoplight, uh, that is, that is a long way to travel, especially if they're unescorted. So, you know, like I said, when it comes to, uh, those types of considerations, if the school district map wasn't included, then I just recommend you kind of touch on that and, you know, work with them about other solutions.
One, one thing as a, one of the things that we really wanted to, to hit on in, inside of this plan was to create the options for the options, right? And it was define methods of people to get to those different locations and these destination locations. Using a vehicle in, in a safe way, but also looking at the opportunity to use the trail system. Using the sidewalk system, finding ways that they can bike there. And that's why you see in the cross sections where we've created these, these channels of places where a person can walk. They could ride their bike and they could go quicker on that section, but those are off the street. They're not on the street anymore. So you can feel comfortable if somebody be able to utilize that. And trying to create these connections, um, there are critical connections that I think we had talked about of, of building those bridges in between, not truly bridges, but creating those links, um, between neighborhoods. Um, the hope is that as we continue to build out, there are always going to be those locations that we need to go back and retrofit and try to find a good solution on it. But as we continue to move into the east and we have more of that development, and this is our guide that says that we want to have more of those connections. Focusing on doing the four-lane arterial streets versus the six-lane is right to your point. Because once you have a six-lane now, you have nine lanes that they have to cross. And can they actually get across it or if they need to diagonal it or whatever? So those were the reasons why we went into these different directions and hoping that we're setting this up for the future so that we don't make the mistakes that we've made, maybe made in the past, but then finding ways to be able to overcome it.
Thank you.
Did any of the parents have any big ideas? Because there's, doesn't seem to be very many big ideas near, near the schools. So did a lot of parents do the survey or come to the public meetings? Because it doesn't, who obviously wouldn't know what the big ideas are, but they might have better ideas.
We don't have a ton of demographic people and demographic information on the people who did comment. And so I couldn't say for sure whose parents are not. Um, we did get several comments near schools about wanting increased safety for pedestrian crossings. Um, I don't know if they're called that as big ideas or something else, but we did get comments on it from people that I would presume are parents, but we don't have great data on what did parents say versus other people say.
Can you do like a survey in the school to get parents' ideas instead of just the genet, not generic, but the big public comment survey?
We did not do specific ones in the schools. We did, um, have sidewalk stickers that had QR codes. Um, that we placed outside of several schools. And so I would hope that they caught people, but then we don't have a way of knowing.
Right, yeah. Okay.
And we do, we do have routine conversations with the schools.
Oh, okay.
With the school district right now. So that the, these are elements that do come up and have conversations on.
Yeah. I mean, people do fly through Grand Avenue. I was just joking because they don't even listen to the, like the school speed limit. I don't have a child in school. I cannot believe parents have just slept like, ugh, so annoying.
I mean, I've had a couple, I've had a couple close calls with the parents flying into school right there because I walk and run down Grand Avenue quite a bit. But so, yeah, yeah, it's real.
And shout out to city staff. I know my kids go to, uh, well, one of my kids goes to Spring Hill Elementary and I never saw. Uh, I clearly, there's a stoplight, there's a stoplight that went in, made a world of difference. Although I had to get used to it being a stoplight and not a stop sign because I've been taking a kid, one of my two kids there for like almost twenty years now. Um, that wasn't, I don't think even in any of these plans, it was like somebody brought up a safety issue. You guys assessed it, found it to be urgent and addressed it. And so thank you from the bottom of my heart, um, for that. And, um, I like that you guys are talking about, you know, or you, I guess, but like, that you guys are keeping it open to different kinds of solutions based on the location. Because I was in El Paso for work a couple of weeks ago and my hotel was near a pedestrian crossway over a major, um, arterial. And it was great. Like I could go grab the best tacos and coffee and I wouldn't have been able to get over there because it was like six lanes of traffic. And I'm, I'm too old to take risks like that. And then I got my steps in. I'm climbing concrete stairs like I would never do. Anyway. Um, but yeah, I know as, as a parent with kids in school, I've definitely had opportunities for feedback and I appreciate you guys.
Awesome. Any other comments, questions? All right, I'll entertain a motion to, uh, approve continuing forward with the mobility plan and, uh, look forward to seeing your all's final version.
Salute.
Second.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, none opposed, motion passes. Thank you very much. Appreciate it. Uh, let's jump back to the item I pulled off of the consent agenda, which was three D, which is updates for FY twenty-six on the master fee schedule. Um, I had just a couple of questions slash comments on that. I was hoping you could speak very briefly uh, to the competitiveness, um, because obviously the fee schedule goes directly to how we incentivize different types of developments in the city. And whether, uh, particular developers or landowners choose Flugerville over our neighboring cities and towns. And so I was hoping to hear a little bit about, um, the approach that was taken in terms of these proposed updates.
Sure. So some of these were a couple that we just didn't have or some that we thought were kind of out of range. We do compare to our comparison cities, whether it's Georgetown, Cedar Park, Round Rock, Leander. Um, we do kind of sit about right in the middle. If you look at them overall, we're not on the high or the low, um, as an average. There are some where we might be a little bit higher, some we might be a little bit lower. Um, but I think we sit pretty much right in the middle.
Okay. Great. And then I, so thank you for that. Uh, and then the other one, I, uh, two of them that I noticed are new are the de-annexation fee and annexation fee. And first of all, I wanted to say, I appreciate that you all have sort of weighted those towards, um, the activity that we want to see. Um, versus the activity that we would prefer not to see. Um, I did wonder how much we know about the annexation fee specifically, which is five hundred plus legal fees plus a tech fee, which y'all added tech fee to a number of line items this year I see. Um, was that based on your all's experience in handling those cases in the past? Was this a more arbitrary number or a, hey, we see our, uh, neighboring cities using a similar fee for this?
No, annexation was a little bit kind of all the, over the board. In the past, we hadn't, we didn't have a fee for annexation. But there's a cost to staff to the city for that. And so in thinking about, um, having development growth pay for, for growth, we thought that was appropriate there. Um, we think that's probably right on par for kind of the, the staff as well as the legal fees, looking at the ordinances and notifications for annexation.
Okay, cool. Uh, one last question in looking at the, uh, water meter and tap fees. Um, you know, obviously water is a huge deal, uh, even like we were just talking about from the mobility side of things. Um, I noticed that those increases are pretty nominal for the most part. Is that largely due to our own cost increases or what was, is there a little bit of justification on?
Brandon, our utility director can help with that one.
So when you're talking about, um, meter fees, type fees, those are all, uh, the increases of those are based upon our material costs. Um, so there's some, a very marginal increase for staff cost to, you know, install, go inspect. Um, but it's based upon the material for, you know, brass, copper, whatever we're putting in the ground.
Okay, so largely materials. Okay.
Yes, sir.
Perfect, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, uh, I think that was all of my questions. Did anybody else have?
Actually, I just have one. Uh, how often do we experience de-annexation?
Um, I think we've had four, maybe five, um, since that law passed. Um, we're fortunate on that side, I guess, where other cities have had quite a few. Um, so while I don't want to see any of that, we've, I think we've, we're on the lower side than some cities have. So four to five.
Okay, thank you.
No.
Motion to approve as drafted.
Second.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? All right, motion passes. Thank you. All right, uh, next up, we are moving into the discuss and consider portion of our agenda. So item five A, I believe, uh, Abby was going to speak to this. Uh, and this is, uh, the latest update on the, uh, five-year capital improvement plan.
Yes, good evening. Abby Morrison, Public Works Services Director. I'm here with the Public Works and Parks Capital Team. Tonight, we are here to request your approval, uh, to request your, uh, recommendation of approval of the five-year CIP to city council. Just as a, a quick reminder from the last time that we were here on April seventh to talk about the program, we took your feedback and went through these programs. So there is about a hundred and eighteen projects over the next five years totaling two point three billion dollars in investment over the next five years. Uh, so what's changed from then to now? So, um, they were minimal, most minimal changes. We did add one project. It's the Skater, SCADA Network Fiber Project, uh, that was added to the facilities program. Um, other modifications that were made were, um, to project costs, uh, descriptions or justifications for ease of reading, uh, page numbers and a new, um, chart at the beginning of the program, um, of the book that shows exactly what funding covers what project and it's split to be a little bit more visible than that. Um, and that starts on page fourteen. Um, and so I'll just go through the programs and what was changed and we can do a quick overview. So we'll start with drainage. As a reminder, there's twelve projects listed within the drainage program. Seven of those projects remove homes from the floodplain. Um, so five of the projects do not, and we made a note of the ones that do and do not, uh, remove those homes from floodplains and how many that is. Uh, so facilities, uh, this is where we added the one SCADA project. So we went from seven to eight projects in this program. Um, there was some discrepancy between the funding source and how much the, the project costs. And so we went back to ensure that all of those matched. And we were looking at if we said we needed two million, either that was covered for the project or we needed future debt. Um, another consideration that we made was on the facility condition assessment. Um, over the next five years, we added inflation to that so that each year we're adding a little bit, um, to that program. Uh, moving on to parks, again, this was another consideration regarding, uh, the inflation over year over year for that annual truck trail improvements, um, at three percent. Uh, transportation, this is our largest program. Um, we had again on, so on Kelly Lane Phase Three, uh, we just corrected some of the costs in the categories. Where one was in preliminary design and it should have been in design. So we made sure to shore that up and correct that. Uh, no major changes to the cost. Uh, Schultz Lane, we updated the project description. Um, FM six eighty-five at Seeds Crossing, uh, we updated construction costs. And we updated the description on the SH one thirty connections to project description. Uh, we'll move to utilities. So reclaim water, we just moved funding on the reclaimed water line along Weiss Lane to start in fiscal year twenty-six and not twenty-five. So we just pushed that out a few months. Uh, water, we did some, we realigned the summary page to reflect the priority of the projects. Uh, wastewater, we, um, updated a OPCCE. So the opinion of probable construction cost got updated. Um, wastewater project twenty-four oh-three Boulder Ridge Lift Station. Um, we needed to add a force main to that project. So combining it did increase that cost, but it was identified as a need. Um, and then the Upper New Sweden Interceptor Project, uh, we updated that cost to reflect preliminary, um, design as well. Uh, as a reminder, we are, uh, here to request your approval of the CIP and propose it to city council. Um, our next, next time we'll see you is at the joint city council meeting, MP and Z meeting for the CIP presentation at the work session on May thirteenth. Uh, formal adoption of the C, um, of the CIP is September ninth and that's a part of our annual budgeting process. And so tonight, uh, we would, we are recommending that you provide a recommendation of approval to city council for the five-year CIP for fiscal years twenty-six through twenty-thirty.
Thank you. Uh, I did have one question. I was hoping you could, uh, speak briefly to the, um, impetus for adding the SCADA, uh, fiber network. It does look like a, a great project for security and resiliency, but, uh,
Sure, I'll let Brandon speak.
Since we're adding a new project, I want to make sure we're clear.
Absolutely. So, so we currently have, um, three active capital improvement projects in construction or design that are putting a conduit. So the conduit, and I'm going to do my best to do this without a map. Um, so the Willbarger Wastewater Treatment Facility, uh, now near Greg Lane, uh, there's an interceptor that goes up from there. It will eventually, eventually connect a conduit to another project, the reclaimed water line to eighteen forty-nine park that also connects to the Weiss Pecan Water Line. So we'll have connect connectivity with conduit between our three major infrastructure facilities um, that currently rely on a, uh, how do I put this? A, an on-network, uh, connectivity, um, without, and we can separate those completely, but then they can communicate to each other. Uh, so we're installing that conduit with the intent of installing fiber in that line so that way each one can communicate to each other. And so then there's redundancy in communication across the large three facilities that we have. That's off, off-grid, so to speak. So it's a local network.
Other comments, questions?
I, I have a question. I think I asked this, uh, at the last meeting. So, um, and, and first of all, amazing stuff. Thank you. This is great. Uh, y'all added the, the charts and graphs for people who like those.
Yes.
Uh, so thank you very much. God bless your finance team.
Yes, yes, yes. Um, and I don't remember, uh, what the answer was last meeting. So I recognize that this document is the, uh, the future for all this fun stuff that we're doing. And it's amazing. So in its full form, right, where, who's your, who's your target audience? Like, is it the public? Is it, uh, professionals in the development space? Is it boards and commissions? You know, I guess who, who is, who is, who do you expect or anticipate that would be ingesting this and comprehending and using it, uh, in its full form? Or does it get sliced down?
So all of the above.
Okay.
Um, so we would want resident, um, residents first and foremost for transparency. They know what's coming on. Developers can use it so that they know, um, and we know those impact fees and things like that. Hey, maybe there's somebody coming in and we have a project going on in that area. Maybe they can take that project on and instead of paying impact fees, things like that. Um, and then it's a guiding document also for staff of when, a planning guiding document so that staff knows so that staff knows, hey, as we continue to grow, there's no signs of slowing down right now. We need to be able to keep up services to our community. This document is one of those guiding documents that we need to be able to keep up with that growth.
Okay, thank you. And so does it, does it, as it exists and iterates, did there, are there, do you expect changes to this or is it amendment? Like, is it, is it hard line changes or is it amendments and additions and?
So it's updated annually. So it is ever-changing and evolution. We wish we had a crystal ball, but we don't. And so we put this information together with the best information that we have at this time. We do our best to, for when we go into a project, we know that we have a budget. But when we're budgeting for a $5 million project, that's going to be done in five years. We don't know what that looks like. We're giving our best educated guess at that point. And so as that project either gets closer or comes online, there are things that come up, not only through the economy, but through a need might change. And so maybe a project comes off because the development did come in and put that infrastructure in, so it would come off at that point.
Understood. Okay, thank you. So with that, and that's all really good stuff, considering the fact that this is absolutely something that the public will view, and that would be why we consider the public as less informed, but just as educated and interested. But also to live on with our contractors, but who also will have people who are instructed to perform work or review things with, having had the benefit of years of knowledge. I think these charts and graphs you did are incredible, absolutely incredible, and I think you could have more. Absolutely. So with that, I would like...
Roundabouts and charts.
Charts and graphs, man. I like circles, right? Big fan of circles at my house. And the only reason I say that, and this is, this is it. Like, I haven't, I haven't made it through the whole thing, but I will, I promise you I will read it. So like, one of the things that I really like about the, is the number, is this, and the numbering, right? And like, oh, this satisfies category 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, and I forget when that initiated. I think, was it a couple of years ago?
I think it might have been two years ago, yeah.
Yeah, and I forget if it was the, which, I forget the acronym of the program that started it, but I think I was in one of some of those meetings. I think it'd be really helpful if those same connections can be explained, or, or, I might say explained, I mean, up in the front. Right? So like your category summaries, I love this detail. It's really, really helpful. But I think if, if you, we talked about the executive summary section. And so adding the charts to the pages was very, very helpful. But when you get to the bullet points on page... I'm so sorry. What page is that on? Five. Sorry, there we go. There's a lot of, oh, here we go, project funding, right? So this is really, really, really great because the detail on the broken out. If there's a way to categorize or kind of tighten up the way that this very important, very critical information would be communicated to the general public, trying to figure out where this stuff came from, that'd be super helpful. And the only reason that I'm on this particular piece is because when the public information came out about the new REC Center, which we voted on in 2019, 21, 22, and all these bonds and things. You know, we have this really amazing idea we've been working on for years and years and years. We go out with this announcement and the only real feedback that I saw just by observing social media, which not my favorite, but also talking to my friends who, they're like, we didn't vote on that. I go, yeah, you did. Three times, you know, like, yeah, and we've been working on it for years. And, and so I think it'd be really helpful for, for the general public who might not remember that not only would we pass it, it was overwhelmingly supported for things like that, like these billions of dollars of building infrastructure. It's been able to like hand out a white paper or one sheet and just go, here's the sheet. And by the way, it satisfies all of this really great information, links to all of this really great information. And here's our subjects and things. So like, no changes, don't change anything, just approve with recommendation. And if, and if that's too much, by the way, feel free to tell me. This is no way.
No, I can definitely take a look at that, but, so the pillars that you're referring to, the little stamps...
Pillars, yeah.
Of the strategic plan, we do have that on the second page. It's the Flugerville Strategic Plan.
Sorry, folks.
And so it doesn't, so it's safety, economic development, infrastructure and services. And so that's where the four stamps came from.
Okay.
And so that was our, that's the guiding document for those stamps. And so, but I can definitely see what we can put together and hopefully we can come up with something that you're looking for. More of a, just a holistic summary page that we can add.
Well, so I think, like, so these images, those are, those icons are hugely impactful, right? And on page two, they're not here. You talk about it and it's really, I mean, like, that's the, those are the pillars, right? That's what we're building the whole thing on. And so I think the imagery is hugely important, especially when, when, you know, in a case just like now, I got handed this and I went right past page two, you know, and, and had to be instructed. So consider me your, your test case.
Any other comments, questions?
It's really good.
It is really good. And it's really, and there's tabs.
There's tabs.
And I love, like... Yeah, and a couple of jobs ago, I was Director of Grant Management. And so your financials table is beautiful, and I know how much work went into it, and I'm so grateful. And yeah, I think, I, I would say to your point, like, maybe there should be a separate, like, one pager or five-page document because this is like, if you want to get into the details, here it is. Because, you know, people who don't know that they voted on the REC Center three times probably aren't reading this.
Well, you make a good point.
Because we even split the, I was on that bond committee. We split the REC Center out separately from the other parks projects because we were so like, the public isn't going to want a REC Center. And we're like, fine, then let's just make it separate. And we had three. We had roads and infrastructure, we had parks, and we had REC Centers.
And they all passed.
And they all passed overwhelmingly. It was ridiculous numbers. And the REC Center was an all by itself. Like, people voted on the REC Center all by itself.
And, yeah.
And like 20, granted, COVID happened right around that vote. So I can see why people forgot. Because I don't remember what year it was that we voted on it. I was on the dugout committee. 2020? I just know we were meeting in person and then we were like, oh crap, I met in person and am I sick now? Anyway.
I have a, maybe an idea or suggestion, just kind of riffing off of what you all were thinking. I wonder if the communications team might want to have a working session or focus group or something, especially with maybe a couple of commissioners who like have dug into some of that, to help them figure out ways to translate the program and let them do their magic. But if that would be helpful, I'm sure we could recruit a couple of folks from the commission to help out with something like that.
Be happy to serve as needed.
Be happy to serve if you need sarcasm. I am terrible at communications and marketing. I'm Excel all day.
All right, I'll entertain a motion to approve the CIP.
Just one quick question, sorry. What I want to say, I really appreciate the visuals that show where projects are happening throughout the city. One question I would have, so I'm guessing, is this data available on the city website to see where projects are happening?
Absolutely.
Because some of, where there's a lot, it's kind of hard to read which dot corresponds to which project, especially whenever you're obviously looking at the transportation map. It's very, very challenging to read. That's completely understandable. And then just one question, or, you know, often when it comes to like large amounts of injections of funds in a city, there'll be questions of, well, where in the city are these funds being allocated? Is it, you know, is there consideration to all parts of Flugerville? Or is it like a lot of funding in only specific areas? Who has access to that? Is it equitable? So I know that there's like, for a couple of the sections, there's a, there's a couple, there could be interpretation of, oh, well, there's only, like, in this category, there's only projects happening in this specific area of town. Why is there, they're not funding or capital improvement projects in other areas of Flugerville? So I'm wondering, I don't know if there's a visual y'all could do on here or if there's like GIS data where people can see other projects that have been funded and put in so that if there was ever a question about, you know, where projects happen in Flugerville and where there's allocation of funds and where we're choosing to put our future dollars, that we know that, you know, holistically, we are funding Flugerville as a whole and not just specific areas. It's just one kind of observation I had. I don't think there's anything that y'all could really put in here that would kind of give that bigger picture, but I think that is something that, like, I kind of noticed in the, you know, maybe the facility capital improvements. There's probably a lot of reasoning why it's in specific areas, but it's definitely something as a community member, if I didn't have some of the background knowledge, I could look at it and say, well, why, why are, why is there so much funding in these areas and not, you know, in my area or where I'm located in Flugerville?
For sure. So I'm really glad actually that you brought that up because we do have a capital improvement program dashboard. So it's flugervilletx.gov backslash projects. At the very top of that, there's a projects stamp that you can click right on and it brings up all of our active projects. We try to keep that as up to date as possible, and so it shows active and ongoing and then future. And if you look at that map, it really shows everywhere in Flugerville has something going on. Whether it's preservation or if it's building a whole new road, we have something really going on all throughout Flugerville.
Okay. And if I missed it, I apologize. But in the intro, is there like any discussion related to that dashboard? Because I think that'd be a good thing to highlight in this plan of, you know, this is giving you one piece, but here's all, where you can find all the following information if you look at, you know, this following website and dashboard. I think that'd be a good thing to highlight in here so people know where to go for, for more info if they have more questions.
Okay.
She took that right out of my mouth. I would actually recommend, I would recommend doing it in each, like, the opening page of each section. So like, I turned to parks, first page of parks, big spreadsheet guy, love circles, we already discussed that, it's amazing. But I think if there was a, either like the other side of it, if you want to know where, physically where this is, go to this, go to the ArcGIS or whatever it is, and this is where you can click and follow along with your projects.
Or even a footer on every single page. For more information, go to this website.
It is really cool, by the way. If you guys haven't been to it, the dashboard is awesome.
Thank you. It's a really, really great plan.
All right, any other comments or questions?
Motion approved, drafted.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, motion passes. Thank you all so much. All right, next item, 5B, discuss and consider action to approve the Unified Development Code Assessment Report. Jeremy?
Here we go.
Good evening, Chair and Commission. So this is another project that we've been working on for quite a while, looking at doing an assessment for the Unified Development Code. So recall that the last time we updated Unified Development Code really, like, cohesively, big, big picture dump on that code was about 2015-ish. But we've gone through a lot of time between there. We've updated master plan, gone through the Aspire Plan. And so we wanted to revisit that plan, revisit our code and see what are the tweaks that we may need to make to be able to accommodate the goals and the aspirations that we have inside the Unified Development Code. So with that, we, we selected Clarion Associates. They have gone through our code, gone through the Aspire Plan, listened to staff, had conversations, and then objectively gone through our Unified Development Code and developed an assessment report. What we will do with this information is then take it and look for next steps on what are those changes that we need to make. And so then there's additional hard work that'll, you know, that we'll jump into. But this is intended to give us that launching point and kind of a gauge on where we're at. With that, Matt, there he is. Matt Gobel with Clarion is here to be able to do a presentation over the work that they found.
All right, thanks, Jeremy. Thank you all for the opportunity to speak. It's good to be here. This is a big document. There's a lot of detail here, so I just want to start giving you an overview tonight of some of what we think are the big thick boys from the assessment report. To move forward. So just a reminder, Clarion Associates, we worked on the project. We have worked on development codes around the state, around the country. I think we brought a lot of best practice knowledge to this just to help provide some, you know, relative knowledge of what other communities in Texas are doing in terms of updating their development codes. And I think we could bring a good sense of kind of where you've really moved the ball forward, farther than a lot of other places, and where you've got opportunities to learn from other places in Texas and around the country. As Jeremy said, we kicked this off with a, really casting a broad net, talking with a lot of folks primarily internally with city of Flugerville about all the different ways that you're using the Unified Development Code, what you think the strengths are, what, where the opportunities for improvement are. We, we, we did a public engagement piece. We talked with folks in the community. It was, but again, though, I think a lot of the key feedback that we got was internal from a lot of the departments that are using the code. And we've turned the feedback around into an assessment report that we have worked on with staff. We've turned the document around a few times based on feedback that we got from them just to clarify some of the projects that y'all are working on. And the result that you have tonight is the final assessment report. I'm going to spend the bulk of my time now talking about the assessment report, which is structured like this. There's an executive summary right at the front. There is a table that summarizes all the recommendations right up front, so you don't have to read the whole thing. Right off the bat, you can just skim that table to look at the topics that are interesting to you. There's some background about the project, why we did this, about introducing the future land use map and its comparison to zoning districts. And then the bulk of the document is implementing the plan, key UDC issues. This is really where we look at Aspire 2040. And we look at the issues that y'all have raised in that plan and we compare them to the zoning code. And we say, do you have the zoning tools to implement Aspire 2040? That's the bulk of the document. On the right there, we get into beyond plan implementation. This is where we look beyond the comp plan to look at things that maybe are not really Aspire issues, like procedural efficiency, but they still are important for improving the code in the future. So I'm going to, I'm going to hit what I think are the high points of this overall document, just pulling from some of the different categories on the slide. Before I get into the discussions, just a few more things about the overall organization. As we worked with Jeremy and his team, we wanted to look at comparison communities. You know, everybody thinks about peer communities and what are, what are Flugerville's peer communities? And y'all might have different ideas on the dais about which communities you aspire to be like or think you're like currently. For purposes of this report, we used the communities that are on the left. Texas communities ranging from Cedar Park, Georgetown, Round Rock in the immediate area, also Frisco up in the Metroplex, Sugar Land down by Houston. Just to give you a sense of some other communities that are grappling with some of the same things that y'all are looking at. You know, so for example, Sugar Land has a mixed-use activity center concept in their plants, like you do. And they've been struggling and thinking about how to implement this mixed-use center zoning. So that's why we included them there, a range of population sizes. On the right, you see a summary of that table. And as I mentioned again, the document has a summary of recommendations right up front. So you can get a sense of how all these different buckets of ideas kind of relate to the big picture. So those are organizational. As I mentioned, staff really asked us to focus this project on the plan. You know, how does this implement Aspire 2040? And thinking about all the thematic areas that you all identified, safety and healthy, community building, environmentally sustainable, et cetera, how does the, how does the code implement those ideas? And we thought through, you know, we tried to break that down and tried to deconstruct it and think about, you know, for example, in the diverse and equitable theme, does the table of allowed uses permit a variety of housing types? You know, that helped get at that equity concept that's introduced in the plan. And so that's, that was the lens through which we looked at our analysis of the code. This, this idea of plan implementation was, was our guiding light. So big takeaways, I'll just start off with these right up front and then I'll get into more specifics. Y'all have a good code. Flugerville staff is, I think, unique. You haven't done a lot of outsourcing of your code drafting. You've done a lot of it internally. You've got some thoughtful planners. I'm not just trying to pat our bosses on the back. We have some really good code drafters. And they have looked around, they've looked at models in the region, they've looked at the state, and they've brought in some good ideas. And they've, they've workshopped them internally. We've heard about all these projects from the corridor design stand... We've heard about all these projects from the corridor design standards to downtown, and there's good tools there. So the basic framework of the zoning districts they have is reflective of Aspire 2040. That's a good thing. There's not a lot of major reworking or major surgery to be done here, it's fine tuning. You've got new tools in place that reflect those new city priorities, like I mentioned. It's not a bad document in the way it's organized in terms of these summary tables, illustrations, things like that. Yeah, you could do more, and there's ways that you could clean up the organization, but it's, you're certainly not starting from any of the worst codes that we've seen, and we've seen some bad ones. You do have some challenges. You know, you've done a lot of piecemeal amendments over time. As the staff has worked on these different pieces, they've, they've been inserted in a way that's maybe not kind of stepped back and looked at the holistic organization. And so you've got an opportunity now with a full code rewrite to really maybe clean up those multiple amendments and make sure that they're integrated as seamlessly as possible. There is a perception of inflexibility from a lot of the stakeholders we talked about, we talked with. I'm not going to say that's entirely, you know, accurate. That's why we use the word perception here. There is a lot of options in there, there's menus of approaches, things like that. I think a better PR job could be done on some of the flexible tools that you've got incorporated into that code. But that's not to say that you couldn't add more flexibility, you know, where it's appropriate. So that's an opportunity. You do need to do some targeted updates to implement the plan, and I'll talk about that in the balance of this presentation. I think the biggest ones right up front are increasing housing diversity to support affordability. The biggest issue everybody talked about when we kicked this project off was increasing housing costs. And then ensuring that future growth respects and builds on Flugerville's distinctive sense of place. Flugerville is a place that is growing fast, you don't have a lot of history here, there's not a lot of sense of place to protect yet, and we heard about that from people. We heard that you don't just want to see new subdivisions develop, you know, one after the other, not necessarily showing their Flugerville roots or showing kind of how they're connected to the place. And so you have an opportunity with future growth to think a little bit more about place making and to create places that are distinct, so they couldn't be in Dallas, or they couldn't be in Plano, or Frisco, or Round Rock, or Leander. So I think, you know, moving forward with that place making piece is a real opportunity here. So with that, let me jump into a little bit more, just issue by issue breakdown of some of those big ideas. We start off with housing diversity. You know, y'all, y'all talked a lot about this. It's not that you're not allowing a lot of different housing types now, but they are not explicitly called out and encouraged and identified in the current code. You could do a better job of specifically identifying duplexes or triplexes, all the missing middle type housing that y'all are familiar with. The graphic on the right shows how we created some illustrations and commentary based on all these different housing forms. And we talk about the way that they're allowed now and the way that they could be potentially allowed in new ways moving forward. One of the bigger ideas here is allowing smaller density increases in established areas. You know, as this growth comes in, a lot of it might be in the form of infill and redevelopment in established neighborhoods. And you've got an opportunity to think through, well, maybe like the final bullets says, allowing duplexes, two-family homes in some existing single-family neighborhoods. We have a lot of experience in communities where those are not, you know, it's not the end of the world, they don't have to be battles, you know, that's a pretty well-accepted housing form these days, provided that the standards are in place to ensure that they just fit what the, what the other single-family homes have to look like. Housing diversity piece is a starting point. I think there are other things that you could do. You might want to look at creating new tools, like a flexible residential zoning district. You know, you could allow some of those other things, like missing middle housing in your existing districts, or you could be more aggressive and/or be more aggressive by creating new districts that require a diversity of housing types. I live in Denver. Erie, Colorado, riots, Denver has a requirement for large subdivisions to have a minimum number of different housing types in different subdivisions. And so they've got tables, you know, of different housing types, and you have to choose X, Y, and Z from those tables. And so you can be more formulaic and more prescriptive in a flexible district. McKinney has done this, they just adopted this in their new code, I think. There's some other examples around the state. Reduced minimum lot size requirements. This is a kind of issue by issue, or building type by building type discussion, but like for duplexes, you've got a 9,000 square foot. Where we just said on the prior slide, you should be allowing more duplexes. And so you need to be looking strategically at things that are barriers, like high minimum lot sizes for certain housing types, to allow them more aggressively in the future. One district that has been pretty well-used is the new SFMU, relatively new, primarily because you've got that 40-foot lot size. You could do more, though, in terms of loosening up some of the restrictions in SFMU on where the non-residential is allowed and make that an even more, you know, good opportunity to introduce the density that you need in that district. The MF districts could be another place to allow more housing types as well. I think they could be more flexibly structured. Right now, you've got a real reliance there on just those flat density maximums, and I think, thinking not just in requirements based on density, but thinking about more building form and where appropriate building forms should be allowed and related to existing districts would be a good way to move those districts forward in the future. So that's housing diversity, that's more housing types. Mixed-use development is emphasized in Aspire as well. Y'all talk a lot about it. On the right-hand side, you've got there examples of the graphics from the plan, mixed-use neighborhood, mixed-use commercial. Again, going back to the staff develops tools, y'all have these new corridor districts that are good steps, that's a good foundation for introducing mixed-use development. Those tools could now be expanded to go beyond corridors specifically and to allow the different scales of mixed-use that they allow in different places. Going back to the district list, you know, you could look at, say, the retail districts or maybe the office districts and allow some housing types in those districts. We've worked in a lot of places now in, again, back in the Denver metro area where some of those old, large shopping centers that are being redeveloped so that they don't have, just have seas of parking lots, but they're actually putting multifamily in some of those old redeveloped centers, which is a good opportunity for those older centers. Allowing more commercial, the flip side of more housing in the non-residential is allowing more commercial in some of the residential, and maybe that's more small-scale, you know, retail, you know, maybe it's the corner shop, you know, something 5,000 square feet or less. But those are, those are kind of targeted amendments to the use list that you could look at. So there's targeted things you could do with the use list, there's adapting your corridor districts to go forward. You also could just look at new mixed-use districts altogether. You know, I mentioned Sugar Land, and they're in the process of evaluating new mixed-use districts by right. There's other places in Texas now that have a lot of experience with this. Fort Worth has a good program of mixed-use villages of different scales that they've introduced through these districts. If you really want mixed use, you know, a district dedicated to that can be a really great tool. And so we proposed that idea here, too. Let's see. I've talked a lot about residential districts so far. Other non-residential districts illustrate the point that you don't need to throw everything away. Again, you're starting with a very strong code, and some of your current districts do get at the Aspire issues really well, especially in this non-residential category. I think the downtown districts that are shown, the Neighborhood Services, Office and Retail support your downtown goals as articulated in Aspire 2040. Your economic and employment development goals are, I think, are well-supported by the GB1 and GB2, for example. So there's good stuff there that doesn't need to be touched, you know. One of the things that we look at in an assessment of a code is what's working well and should be carried forward. And I think everything on this slide is just an example of how, again, you're not starting from scratch, you have a lot of good tools in place. All right, beyond districts altogether, what about the uses allowed within the districts? I think this is an opportunity for more targeted updates to the code to get at some of these themes that I've already introduced. So for example, more housing opportunities. You could have more live-work units that are introduced in a brighter, broader array of districts, like I show here, OR, Neighborhood Services, the new mixed-use districts. Already, you allow accessory dwelling units in all your single-family districts, maybe looking at moving that forward and allow them in the 2F as well. Consider multifamily a little bit more broadly, maybe as a conditional by right use in CL4. Again, these are all kind of stretching the boundaries of ideas that you've already got, but I think, so these wouldn't be seen as radical, but they're moving the ball forward in terms of getting at those planned goals. In terms of the standards that apply to the uses, updating the ADU regulations, I think there are some barriers there that, there's regulations that could be seen as barriers to doing ADUs, such as the ownership requirement in the principal dwelling. And a lot of communities have either gotten rid of that, so you can have the owner either in the ADU or in the principal dwelling, or just not have the owner on site altogether. And that could be a policy discussion worth having. Updating this, there's a lot of just cleanup, maybe updating the definitions and standards for group living to get more in line with, as those terms are revised and continually modified by the state. I will just flag the use table graphic here, and we're going to come back and talk about user-friendliness at the end, but this is a place where I think there is more opportunity to clean up and better organize the presentation of uses in your current code. This is a bit of a, the whole alphabetical list of non-residential uses makes it really hard to understand kind of subcategories, you know, food and beverage versus office versus utilities, et cetera. So that's an opportunity to clean that piece of it up. Moving beyond uses, the development quality standards is a place where, again, you've got opportunities for targeted updates to get Aspire issues, architecture, site design, and layout. I think there's more opportunity to introduce incentives and bonuses for projects that are getting at the quality that you want to see. You know, maybe you allow reduced lot widths or reduced lot sizes or something, you know, if somebody's providing really an exceptional design. You need to start walking a finer line here with the mandates that the state is now putting on you in terms of regulating design. You know, y'all know that you can't regulate building materials now, and there's a lot of standards in there where you've specifically said, well, we can't enforce this standard based on, based on state law. You need to clarify, you need to clean that whole piece of the code up, get rid of the things that are clearly not enforceable, that you don't want to try to enforce, but maybe look for, you know, incentive-based approaches where you want to try to keep some of those design-based regulations. A lot of communities have looked at keeping that type of intent through incentive-based approaches. Targeted updates to building design standards. Y'all's standards are pretty good, especially in the new downtown. There's places to take them even further and do clarifications. I've got graphics here of parking structures, and one place that's talked about is new standards for parking structures. We did hear about some real nitty-gritty details here from some of the folks we talked with. I think you regulate window trim and door trim. There's, and I think there's an opportunity to now, to just step back and say, which of these pieces are really important to us and which might just be seen as unnecessary barriers, you know, to developing some of these areas? There's, there could be more intent statements throughout the design standards to really clarify what is it we're trying to achieve in these different districts. And as you're looking at new mixed-use districts, that's a really good opportunity to clarify what some of those design intentions are. Parking. You've got minimum parking requirements. Think about maximums. You know, a lot of cities now in the state and in the country have said, you know, you can't have more than, okay, here's our minimum, you can't have more than 125% of our minimum. And if you go beyond that, maybe you've got to have permeable pavers or something. But a lot of cities have started to say, everything non-residential, you can't go beyond 125%, or something like that. So it doesn't have to be a, for all uses, maybe it's just non-residential, but that's something to think about. I think revisiting the minimum onsite parking requirements is worthwhile. Some of them do seem high relative to some of the other particular use types, and we have some example tables in the report that talk about some of those. There needs to be more flexibility in how you meet your minimum parking requirements. Is it shared parking? Is it valet parking? Is it off-site parking? Is it a transportation demand management study that's submitted by employer? Is it a, you know, some type of just study, unique to that site, that shows that your parking demands are going to be less than would otherwise be expected? All those types of things are pretty common these days, and they could be enhanced here. In the downtown, you know, if that is a place, you know, as you move with some major redevelopments there, as you think about what that walkable place might look like, maybe you don't need to have parking requirements there moving forward. This is, you know, still a place where you probably need cars to get around to a lot of Flugerville, but maybe there's places where you could think about not having parking requirements. Then moving into that italicized bullet at the bottom, maybe it's not just downtown, maybe you want to think about the overall city and you don't want to have parking requirements at all. You've seen Austin, you know, go through this, you know, Austin's the biggest city in the country now that's gone through this discussion. We've got some tables in the report that talk about other places. These are just Texas cities that have eliminated parking minimums. It's, every place we work in, you know, is going through this conversation. It's not saying you're not providing parking, it's saying that the market is going to determine what parking is provided, and you as a city are not going to be in the business of trying to set those, you know, standards which are often perceived as arbitrary. Other sections here, I'm not going to cover everything, there's a lot, but multimodal connections, very related to what you heard about from the Kimble Horn representative tonight, you know, requiring trail, better trail connections in the code, you know, to link neighborhoods and districts, and I think that's just reflective of some of the themes that you heard about earlier, ensuring that bicycle parking requirements are strengthened, incentivizing bicycle parking, maybe by allowing reductions in car spaces. We heard from a number of stakeholders that you did think that bicycle parking should be a little bit more encouraged, even despite the climate, that you have a lot of bikers here. Reduce onsite landscaping requirements, or change the approach, so it's not a fixed percentage necessarily, there's more flexibility there. Refocus landscaping requirements to emphasize tree plantings. There's a lot of other things in the code, in the report that I'm not mentioning, like updating the native plant list and the prohibited plant list, things like that. Parks and open space, y'all have a new plan. You know, the code implements the plan. You need to look at things like revising the fee and lieu rate to be more reflective of that plan's goals, and also just to make it a more manageable tool in the future. Codes should not specify specific fee requirements. They should refer to fees that are outside the code in some type of adopted users guide or fee annual, which was another item on the agenda. You have a set fee schedule. Last time I checked, you still had a set fee in the code, and that could have been changed, but I, that should be taken out of the code and updated. Improving the criteria for parkland, we accept it. This was an issue that we heard a lot about from the staff of, sometimes we're just, you know, they tell us, this is the parkland we're proposing, but it's not really a good fit for our park needs. And do we have clear criteria in the code for dealing with those types of situations? You've got public dedication of park covered. Other communities are also looking at private open space set-asides that complement those public dedications for non-residential. You know, maybe it's a plaza, maybe it's some type of gathering area, maybe it's a green roof, but something that's accommodating the recreational or open space needs of people on a site, not necessarily meeting a public dedication requirement, but it's helping to contribute to that overall need of recreation in the community. And y'all have a great reputation now, you know, for trails and for parklands, this would just be to complement the requirements you already have. All right, so I mentioned that the bulk of this was on the plan, and that's what I covered here, but it's worth noting a few other things beyond the plan. You know, all this user-friendliness stuff, you know, there's a lot of things you can do, you know, graphics and tables and things like that, and you don't need me to go through more of those, but user-friendliness is in the eye of the beholder, you know, and you've got an opportunity now to maybe do a more in-depth survey of your development community and say, really, you know, how easy is this to use? What are the tools that we could use either through online presentation or what have you, you know, to make this a more user-friendly tool and to encourage you to do the right type of development in Flugerville? I think the procedural piece is important as well. You know, there's opportunities to eliminate repetition by expanding your common review procedures, you know, if every procedure type is subject to the same steps, you know, let's try to think of a clean, simple way to repeat those once or twice versus having to repeat them multiple times. You've got some updates to the subdivision procedures that are noted to comply with always-evolving state laws. I think just the overall combination of subdivision and zoning is a real opportunity for you to clarify how those pieces fit together, you know, and how if the property is subdivided, it's going to have to comply with zoning requirements and how the same definitions apply within both contexts. So pretty obvious stuff, but it should be looked at as part of a code update. So that's a whirlwind of things. I would love to take questions, but just as a reminder, we appreciate the opportunity. This was a lot of fun to look at this code because it's an interesting code. It's, again, it's, you're doing things that we don't see elsewhere and... It's, again, it's, you're doing things that we don't see elsewhere, and the fact that you've done them all internally and with such thought is, was, was surprising and gratifying to see and talk about. So we enjoyed. Questions?
Yeah, sure. I can get us started. Yeah, you know, first of all, definitely want to, you know, commend you and staff for putting in clearly a ton of work here to consider ideas, to pour through all of the detail in the existing code. It's not super user-friendly, like you called out, which means it's also not super friendly to audit, I'm sure.
Yeah.
And so this is great. I think there are a ton of really good ideas that I hope that we can act on quickly on, on some of these things. I think that in general, I love the emphasis on affordability for sure on the housing side. I do think there's some areas where we could potentially increase our, our leverage and incentives to the point that you made a few times around, you know, incentivizing the types of development that we want. Some of the other things that I really, really loved was, I'll switch over to the parking side now. It was really useful to see the table of comparison cities and their minimums, and I was surprised that we were so much higher than some of our, our other towns. I'm not sure personally that we're quite ready to be a no-minimum city, but I think we could get creative and innovative in terms of how we, again, incentivize lower parking. I definitely think we should be meeting or exceeding in the downward sense our neighboring cities, of course, that's certainly the trend. I think some of the things we could look at for that might be, I've heard some stories of cities that do basically like, I don't know what the right word would be, basically land banking or reserving the space for parking, and really you're hoping they don't ever actually have to build the parking, right? Keep it pervious for a while, right, instead of requiring, hey, day one, you've got to have all your, all of your pavement down. That, so I think there's some things like that. I think our parks, you know, you called out our parks fee and lieu, I think that's an interesting concept when you're talking about parking as well, right? Can we actually just buy off spaces potentially? I, you know, I looked at some of the examples of like alternative ways of meeting parking minimums. I would toss out, I think EV chargers is another good avenue beyond bicycles, which I love that idea as well. See what else I had in parking. I'd spend a lot of time in the parking section. Oh, and then I think, you know, the other thing related to parking, again, in the, in the spirit of, I don't know that we're in a position where we would necessarily want to completely remove minimums, totally agree with the idea of, of having maximums. I also think that we should probably build something in from a process perspective to make sure that we're reevaluating utilization every couple of years. I don't know if it's two years, if it's five years, whatever makes sense. So if we're going to have a minimum, we should have a set timeframe where we go and do fairly simple study and see where we're at and continue to ratchet it down as we can. I would say a similar tactic could probably be used on the housing side as well with lot sizes and setbacks, right? Let's look at what the market does after we reduce these lot sizes and setbacks for a couple of years and then reevaluate and see if we can further reduce them.
Love that.
I think that's a, a good way to make sure that we're building in the flexibility in the, in the code rewrite that you're doing. Definitely, one of the things that stood out to me on the housing side was, was definitely the, the lot size, the duplex, minimum lots, I think those are all clear, you know, bullseye right on, we've got to, we've got to reduce some of those sizes for sure. Love the idea of the corner store piece. I think one area that I didn't see called out that I do think we should revise or update in some capacity is school trucks. Our, Flugerville has continuously sort of struggled with the right balance of providing space, having standards, setting the guidelines and rules. I think that's something that would be, would be great to be called out. A few other pieces, oh, one I absolutely wanted to bring up, and I know I've talked to a couple other commissioners about this before as well, the unit ratios in our multifamily places, we got to get rid of that, right? It's, we should not be mandating the ratios of how many bedrooms you're allowed to build in our multifamily homes. I think that's, it's a, from a bygone era of Flugerville, right? It's the wrong incentive. So I think that's a really big one. I didn't see in here any concepts around, you know, there's, and Austin is doing some of this now to like single-stair requirements. That might, I don't know, you know, how effective that might be or how much upside we might get from it, but that could be something to consider.
Single stair for multifamily?
For multifamily, yeah. Let's see, a couple of the other things that I was thinking about, just trying to come up with some other ideas. We can look at incentives by way of like impact fee reductions for lot sizes, could be a way to help incentivize that, because that's one of the ways that we can show, I think, value, right? We may not be the least expensive place to build new homes and housing, and our, our fees are a big part of that and how we can compete. So that could be a really great way, you could tie that to the design standards, like you were saying as well, right? You know, we can increase your density and, and decrease your lot sizes if you, you know, abide by some of these. And then love the idea as well around the adaptive reuse on the commercial side as well. I think having some of that framed out would be good. Loved a lot of the ideas on the reformatting and ease of use. One of the things I was thinking about as I was going through it, especially seeing some of the diagrams and those things, I think it would be a really useful tool for our development community to have playbooks of like, hey, here's, here's what you do step by step if you want this type of thing, here's what we're looking for, here's the things to look out for. And quite frankly, it's another opportunity to incentivize, right? Maybe we have a fast-track review process. I think does Dallas, City of Dallas maybe have, or San Antonio maybe too?
We do.
Okay. Yeah, so maybe there's an opportunity to expand that then as well. Again, you know, cut down those, those cycle times to, you know, weeks instead of months or months instead of years for some of these projects.
Playbook, that's a great term.
Yeah.
Well, yeah, sometimes they're called users' guides or just development examples, but yeah, playbook is a great idea. Showing people how they can get through the process and then which pieces you're really going to be focusing on.
Yeah.
That you want to see and where you want to see emphasis and what's going to get you through faster.
Yeah, I mean, I think it's an interesting balance that we have to strike, right? Because we want the, we, we need the flexibility to attract the market, but we also need to be prescriptive in terms of what we expect and want. And I think the phrase I've been using a lot lately is like negotiate from a position of, of strength, right? We're not just taking any developments anymore in Flugerville, I don't believe. I think we have a ton of opportunity to have like a super smart connected city, and we just went through the capital improvement plan. And I think this is, this is a way that we can set that right framework, set those examples, and make it easier and faster to, to build. I don't know, threw a bunch of stuff out, but yeah.
I completely support all that. So I've actually participated in the pre-development process, both as an individual but also as a representative of other organizations. I think the ease of use thing is, is really interesting. I think the thing that's, I got one here, I don't know if it's picking me up. The, so I was actually in that process, I think when the law passed that you couldn't prescribe building materials.
Yeah.
And so we had gone from, it was something like 50% stone with metal facade to, oh, you don't have to do that anymore. We also had something here one time where a developer was trying to build an apartment complex and the, I think it was apartments, and like the, the landscape design plan was, was, the way it was prescribed and implemented in their plan drawings, they were coming before us to request a, a reduction because of, you know, if, if the trees are planted at this spacing today, in 10 years, we're going to have to take away every other tree because the canopy growth and that kind of stuff. So I think those, those forward-thinking ideas, one, reduce the cost upfront, but also mean that you don't have to deal with future issues with stuff like that. One of the things that I, I really appreciated was your incentive-based development guides or, or subscription, I guess for lack of a better term, like, hey, if you, if you, if you're willing to build these things, we're willing to make some accommodations.
Yep.
I don't know how much lead development, like lead building code gets into that or if we can incentivize things like that, because in my mind, the, the things that I see in our future are water resource limitations, but then also energy conversion, right? So how do you take a hot building and make it cold? And so if there's a way to incentivize or, or, you know, I mean, I'm not an architect, an engineer, anybody who's got any experience with that stuff, but if there's a way to incentivize private development into that building style, right? Then, then what we see is an overall reduction in our energy consumption and then less of, you know, heat pollution and light pollution and all those other things that go with that. So, you know, for whatever that's worth.
The whole category of environmental sustainability is broad and challenging to get at from a code perspective. A lot of that stuff is building code, but some, some cities have really strived to get at that from the land use side. We can share with Jeremy and his team some examples from like Henderson, Nevada, where they've done point systems. And basically, they say, we want you to be more green, but here's a menu, here's a lot of different ways you could do it. You pick out five things from this menu.
Sure.
Kind of like the menus y'all have, but some of it might be waste reduction on site, some of it might be alternative energy, some of it might be alternative building materials, but, and the thing about those types of systems is like, like all the point systems you have, you have to monitor them over time and make sure that they stay current, that your point values are actually calibrated well, that they reflect the, the relative cost of doing those things. But, yeah, they, they can be a good way of, of providing options. So we can share some examples.
Yeah, and, and I wish I had a, you know, I wish I had some more guidance to provide you, it's just a passing thought. So if it's, you know, if it didn't go anywhere, I just don't understand, because I hadn't thought about it until you mentioned it. But it's really great. Thank you.
Thank you.
So many great comments. I appreciate that. The only sections that I wanted to make a comment on, one, I mean, more than anything is just to express my absolute excitement of seeing the fee and lieu for Parkland dedication being reconsidered. That's very, 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 very exciting. I think that's going to be a great benefit to our city and developments as they come up. And then related to like planting, and I appreciate that we're looking at really making sure that we're removing any invasive species from approved tree lists, prohibiting the planting of invasive species, but I would say whenever it comes to providing, you know, different options for planting, providing information related to what are pollinators and what are pollinators, what are active pollinators, you know, we're right, like really, like really productive pollinators, really giving the information to folks so what they put in developments are really going to help our ecosystem in Flugerville is, is of great importance, increasing bee populations and different pollinator populations should be a high priority, not just moving away from invasive species, which is a given, but also just really promoting planting in a very, very, very mindful way, considering less water and all the awesome critters that help our ecosystem.
You know, just one super nitpicky thing about what you just mentioned, and speaking of pollinators, right, I think keeping in mind that our, our native bees largely live underground, and so thinking about how we position the, the regulations and suggestions around planted areas to keep that in mind.
Agreed, and, and also, you know, thinking about the beautiful bees, butterflies, but you know, also bats, there's a lot of different pollinators and there's different types of trees, it's not just about flowers, it's, I mean, it's, it is a wide array of, of landscaping that can really promote this really awesome healthy ecosystem that we want to have here in Flugerville with our really incredible green spaces. And I, I'm not sure even if this is a code item, I'm just going to throw it out there, really encouraging no mow zones, no mow zones, as much natural greenery as possible and trying to, to allow for more, you know, just natural growth and native plants.
You mean no lawn mowers, no MOW, or no modification?
Yeah, no mows.
No mow.
No mow zones.
Okay, I haven't heard that term.
Yeah, yeah, areas where, where in specific parts of this season, we, there's no mows, mowing allowed. And maybe it's just encouraging that in, in developments as well. I don't know, I don't think there's anything related to the code for that, but if there is, I just wanted to state it. Thank you.
Okay, I'll go. Have a question, okay. So right now, this feedback that we're providing, is this going to staff for what you're going to have in mind as you redo the code, and then it goes to council, or is council going to see this report?
This is where this report stops.
That's what I thought.
And so we're taking this, and then on the street right now is a request for a proposal for someone to help us redo the code. While staff has, in my opinion, done a great job doing the code for so long, it is quite a task, so I'm waiting to bring it to the council to help with that. So they'll take this report, do stakeholder feedbacks, you'll have many work sessions with us to get into the details of all those changes.
Awesome. So then, so then my thoughts, I'm going to try to stay higher level, like, I love the report, I don't usually, that's a lie, I do like policy and read it, but this one was really easy to read, the layout was fantastic, the recommendations, some of them were things, I'm like, yes, we've been saying that, and some of them were, ooh, that's a good idea. I appreciated the recommendations on layout, and I also appreciated some of the specific call-outs that I think were examples that have more of like, let's focus on the design elements that we really care about and let go of the ones that we don't, because if anything we can do that isn't that important to us that can reduce the cost to the developer brings more development in here, and then the affordability too is huge, like I, it would be much harder for me to afford to buy in Flugerville now than when I did. And all of, and while supply is an issue and increasing the supply helps with the overall cost, we really are only seeing higher-end things come before us. And so anything that we can do to, and I like, you know, to the extent that we and council as a policy decision can encourage mixed income, I love that. Regarding the recommendation on changing the way we think about mixed use, I do think that the existing residents are already really frustrated with some of the changes, although the ones who, who come here have been really receptive. I think the political fight on moving more commercial into residential that's existing would be a huge barrier, but I do think allowing residential and commercial wouldn't be a fight, because people, if there's an area that's currently commercial and it's not currently residential, allowing residential in there wouldn't upset the existing residents. So thinking about that, but again, I also like the idea of more flexibility in green spaces and, and parks and planning discretion on what is this lot, what is the need here, and does it need to be a recreation park or does it need to be a green space that is something else and stormwater, all of that? I'm really excited to see what you guys and your consultant come up with.
So I have a few things. So I'm kind of on the, the side of no parking requirements, period, because you have a, a developer who's built, let's just say, three subdivisions and six commercial properties, they know what they need for parking, so they can make the right decision. Maybe they only need 40 parking spaces, but they're supposedly required to do 100. That's way more than they need for such a big commercial spot. So I'm kind of different than, I apologize, than you, because I think there shouldn't be any. And then also I have a question. So most of the neighborhoods are subdivisions within an HOA, so how do you get HOAs to allow an ADU? Is this not a thing?
No, that's a, that's a great point.
Okay.
I'm smiling because you're totally right.
I don't, I don't have a yard for an ADU. I put a pool in my yard, but there's other places where, so for an example, like my HOA is like super restrictive on fence. I live in front or back of a big RV parking space and like 18-wheelers are driving by. I love an eight-foot fence, but my HOA said no. So how in the world are we going to get the HOAs to say yes to an ADU when I can't even get an eight-foot fence?
You need to go lobby the Texas Legislature.
Right, but they, actually, the, the government has no control over HOAs. It would actually have to come from us, so if you, so it'd have to come from the city to have some kind of allowance for an ADU, because...
We do, we do allow for that, but then the private restrictions associated with the HOA is...
Yeah, so more of us need to get on HOA boards and do all that. I'm just saying, there's just so... I'm just saying, there's just so much, I mean, I know because I was on an HOA. I am obviously now in planning and zoning and I've been to a bunch of meetings with my clients for commercial, to build commercial. So like I've seen it from both sides and I'm just wondering how you can fix that.
Well, the city making a policy decision that these are good for us, these are good, we don't have a problem with these and we encourage them, that really changes the conversation. And yeah, you might still have HOAs somewhere that want to, you know, stand against that. And you can't overrule them, but they're going to have to overcome now this new policy position from the city. That these are a good thing for Flugerville.
Yeah, because it's definitely cost-effective. And I'm not saying like, okay, the subdivision then builds an ADU for you because then you're looking at a million dollars and the affordability is out the door. Because two units, 500K each, that is mathematically a million dollars. So like there has to be something there to fix it.
That's a big question.
It's such a big question. I just threw it out there.
I have some really like specific knowledge that I can share privately just because this is going to take forever.
It would take forever, yeah. And I've been on multiple committees and multiple HOAs and tried to fix things and explain things to my clients, how to fix things, but...
But no, it's not a bad idea. And also I think the challenge, so, so one of the things we've talked about for the last five years, four and a half years, I've been doing this, is that the affordability problem is like a three or four, I think a three or four problem. One, there's the land availability, shovel-ready sites, who's got them?
Yep.
And then how can they be incentivized to either act or, well, I mean, act would be in the form of start construction or dispose or acquire parcel together so that next steps to be taken. So that's one aspect of it. And then the second is cost of actual construction, right? So concrete prices have doubled in the last however many years. Lumber, when it was going through the roof.
Well, we have no idea what's going to happen now with...
Right, maybe you'll later the whole thing. Like it's just, it's interesting and then you can buy on top of that, integrate purchasing power, value of the dollar.
Right.
Who's doing what and where, right? So what's, what is, and I'm sure in your experience, you've seen this where people are saying, well, why is, why is our town not getting this thing? And I see other towns are getting other things. And that's, it's a nearly impossible question to answer in a normal way, other than saying whoever owns that land doesn't want to sell. Right? Or they're not ready to, or they're not ready to develop it. And so we don't live in a society where we can go in and plus we're condemning things or forcing into domain to make those things happen. But I think on the ADU and affordability side, the, to incentivize that type of development, you could take a, like an owner or developer that isn't necessarily taking down 500 acres to build 30, 500 units. They're taking down 10 acres or 20 acres or 30 acres. And they can put instead of 30 units on it, they can do 60 or 75 or whatever the case can be and create that neighborhood service like the C store, really an idea. You know, I mean, I wish our neighborhood had something much closer for, you know, even though the CVS is, the closest retail store in my house is about a quarter mile away. To get there, I've got to cross a couple of busy roads and it's not a pleasant journey, so to speak. So, you know, I think the infill development is the part of that that really stands out because once you start getting, you know, out into the large acreage tracts that are still available, that's when a developer just by mechanism says, well, we're going to create an HOA because part of the development code is I have to build X number of parks and I'm going to build a pool and a mini center. Well, as a developer, I'm not going to, I'm not going to maintain that. Once I'm done building and the city is not in the position to accept that parkland as an operator and maintain and keep. And so we have to create a mechanism by which those facilities can be maintained and before. And so I think that's the, that's the challenge faced there. But by incentivizing the code, then maybe some of that stuff.
Yeah, and I don't necessarily want the developer to build the second, the ADU. I'd rather it be built in, like that we can do it ourselves later because that adds into affordability.
Is it possible to, within the code, to require or encourage a developer to bring their HOA development documents forward in part of the review process?
So we can see them, but we can't...
Change them.
Yeah, those are a separate, separate document that's tied into...
File the state.
Yeah, your own, it's private restrictions. And so the city is not a part of those private restrictions.
But I do think the portion of allowing, so let's say a commercial person wants to buy one and a quarter acres to build a 8,000 square foot shopping center. We can or maybe possibly incentivize for them to build, to buy two and a half acres and then allow the multifamily to go up behind them or something like that. Because right now it's just commercial, period. But if we can do commercial and mixed use or mixed use and allow like a convenience store or gas station and then boom, right behind us.
And we have some of that and that's where some of the conversations also came through. Like our GB1 district allows for you to have vertical mixed use inside of it, but you're limited in density. So it's 20 units per acre that's a requirement. There's also some design pieces that come into play that's talked about inside of the code of like making sure that we're, that we calibrated that correctly. And so in these next steps, that's what, why we wanted to do this process was to establish this assessment, to find where are the issues or where are the things that we can make improvements to. And then our next step is to move on into those particular piece.
Yeah, because if a developer's developing a building, they're already doing flat work. They're already doing a detention pond. They're doing all the things that need to be done. You know, traffic lights, traffic impact analysis, they're doing all of these things. It would be a great incentive to say, okay, but we, there's like another acre, ma'am or sir, you can purchase that and then we'll give you this extra thing.
You know, a couple of things occurred to me on the HOA conversation and we don't have to like continue to dig into that.
Yeah, I apologize. I dug into an area that no man can go.
But I am, I am mindful though that there's really only three or four main HOA attorneys that do, that write up most of these documents and there's really only four or five management companies that then enforce those. There could be an interesting, and maybe this is, you know, fantasy land, but there could be a world where maybe we do have some guidance. Obviously, we can't enforce anything, but if we have preferences or we want to do some education, there's potentially, we could do some outreach to folks like that, including with the developers who are bringing in new subdivisions as well. And say, hey, these are things that our city cares about. Here's our fancy new code, but by the way, while you're considering your HOA, we've already met with, you know, the three attorneys that mostly write every...
Right.
That could be, that could be on the incentive side of things, right? So like, you know, if, if, if the HOA documents that, you know, as a private developer, if you're willing to bring your HOA documents before us and satisfy these things that meet the development code, et cetera, then that might qualify into a fast track.
It could be, it could be a density thing. If you do so many ADUs as part of the project, then, you know, density increase could be there. But that's where these conversations can, can lead us based on, off this assessment.
I don't think always shortening or making a 40-foot by 60 or 100-foot lot line is an incentive to many people. I mean, not everybody wants to, I like you very much, but I'm not sure. I want to like see you in your house. So, I mean, these are things that I get on, not on a daily basis, but on a more regular basis, that they just don't want to be almost a zero lot line. I mean, I have, one of my clients has a zero lot line development happening soon. And I think it'll sell very, very fast because it'll be very reasonable. But in the end, when they have to resell, people are going to be like, oh my God, I have no yard. So this is a difficult, eventually a difficult sale.
I think there's also some generational, you know, recently I saw some data from the ethnography work that you all have done as well, that I think there are, different generations have different needs as well. And so I think if we think about what different parts of the population you can serve through, right? Specifically, I know some folks who love their zero lot line neighborhood because, you know, it's easy, it's easy. You know, anyway, I don't refute anything you say.
Yeah, no, and I'm not refuting you either. I'm just saying like only small lot lines would just be tragic.
Yeah.
That's where, what I think came out of this report too was just making sure that there are those different, that we have brought in these different pieces so that it can accommodate. So I think one of the things that was loud inside of the report was if you don't offer it, if you're not vocal about it, then it's not necessarily going to happen. And therefore we just need to be more deliberate about how we go about making those adjustments.
If it's not even an option, you're not going to get it.
Right, yeah, right.
So on that, one of the things that's been talked about too is like the affordability piece is that, you know, in the past, we've talked about encouraging development from like local development as opposed to incentivizing developers from outside, right? Where, where their money comes in, they build a thing and then they take the money they've made from it and they left.
And they leave, yeah.
Right, so I think that's, that's, that's been a theme throughout the years of service on, with all this. You know, I don't know how that applies to the code. And then the, the other affordability piece that we've discussed, and it was just on the tip of my tongue, but, oh, we've talked about many times that ownership, right, is considered, you know, by economists and et cetera, that it's ownership of a property is the pathway to the next socioeconomic status or class. And so I don't know, I mean, it's probably a broad, deep question about how do you take the, how do you take the code? And how do you take our aspire plans and how do you take all of our forward plans and things and effectively create a, a place where ownership is incentivized, right? So you incentivize builders and developers to create those things that then become valuable resales and place-making, like we talked about place-making earlier. So, you know, if you take a community of duplexes where they're not, you know, standard, side-by-side, like, you know, very conventional, but if they're different shapes or if they're in your, in your design guidelines where you have, you know, four or six units on a lot that have a common park space, well, now you've created a place. And then if you can have the, a unit of say 10 or 12 of those and then you have a C store or a three-unit shopping center, right now you've incentivized that type of development and then ultimately ownership and then ultimately stability and growth and et cetera. So, you know, I think a lot of that stuff's addressed here and really good, but, you know, for what it's worth, top of mind.
You reminded me of something I meant to bring up, which is there is a big section in, not a big section, there is a section in here talking about build to rent and incentivizing that. And I absolutely do not think we should be incentivizing build to rent.
I disagree.
The market is bringing those in, but I think we need to put our emphasis and our hard work to incentivize ownership. Back to what you were saying. I don't think they should be disallowed, but I don't think we necessarily need to make it incredibly easy to have those neighborhoods.
See, I think when we talk about affordability here, it's a very common trap that we all fall into, thinking about ownership and thinking about building wealth. But we're talking also about affordability like to live. Like, and like not to brag, but I've been really, really poor. And I have driven by, all through my twenties, I saw people under the bridges at I-35 and I was like, I am one more missed shift away from that. And the people who work in our coffee shops here need to be able to also get to work quickly and you can't commute in or out, we all know, quickly. Austin is not affordable at all. You can't have kids in Austin. I wouldn't go so, I wouldn't necessarily incentivize renting, but do not forget the people who are living paycheck to paycheck. They will not be buying. That's not a thing that they can do. And when we talk about affordability, that's really missing here. The apartments that are growing up are very expensive, like preschool teachers cannot afford them, baristas cannot afford them. And so anything we can do to address that, which is a huge gap in Flugerville, is the one thing I don't like about our city, honestly. Is, I would love to see more ways to do that. And I honestly think that it's a bigger question than our code. It's a much bigger question than our code. It's a funding issue, it's a participation in federal and state HUD programs issue. But it can also be done through code with things like the Mueller development in Austin, which really is still not the paycheck-to-paycheck family because I did...
No, it's definitely not.
I saw all the rules on that because I had that.
I did too. I was, I worked at CPS at the, when they were building that and I was definitely low income and I definitely could not afford and then you can't sell your house for like, but, so the idea of Mueller, there are better policy ways to do that. But do, I do want to make sure that we do still have things for our preschool teachers who take care of our kids here in town and our teachers.
Well, there needs to be some grants for teachers. There needs to be more there for teachers.
That won't go as far as having a better code to support affordability.
I'm not anti-renting.
No, it's, it's another piece of housing diversity.
I'm ready to move to approve, whenever you guys are. I move to approve the approval of Unified Development Code Assessment Report.
Second?
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Hearing none, motion passes. Thank you all very much. We are adjourned at 9:20 PM.